Okay, good morning, everyone. It is, well, we're just a few seconds away from nine o'clock. On this 12th day of September, we are here for our regularly scheduled Commissioners' Court meeting, Karnes County. We do have a quorum present that stands for prayer and pledge, and we'll get started.
Every father, thank you for the state and every day you give us. We ask that you bless this county with with the gift of rain. And we ask that you guide us through this proceedings as well as into the future. We ask this in your name, amen.
Pledge allegiance, sacred flag, and two of them, one nation, one God, indivisible, limited. Okay, thank you. Item number five this morning, citizens to be heard. Do we have any folks signed up to speak this morning, Ms. Sweets? We have four signed up. I can put another blank over. Okay, who's gonna go first? Ms. Sweets.
Good morning. A salary committee was created and has been meeting over the course of the last year. I am a member of this committee. In one of the first meetings during the summer of 2022, we discussed creating a plan that would provide for the employees an adequate salary, one that would aid in retention of employees, and also one that would be sustainable. It was determined that we would plan to implement one phase each year for three years. Phase one was to raise the base salary of every position to a wage that would be comparable to similar jobs outside of the county. You, the court, approved this for fiscal year 2022-23. The result of this was substantial increases for almost all county employees. Specifically, deputies received between about $1,400 to $7,000 in this phase. This was just last year. Even though most employees received an increase, there were some discrepancies that we knew would have to be addressed. Last year, the court approved that the lowest paid employee would receive a salary of $40,000 per year. These same employees will receive a 3% increase this year. That would amount to a $1,200 raise for the fiscal year. $1,200. That is $46.16 per pay period before taxes are taken out. If these same employees receive 3% each year, in nine years, they will have been given a little over $10,000. Nine years. The second phase, which was presented this year to be implemented in FY 2324, was to begin a longevity pay program for all employees. The third phase was to research and develop a step program for each position in the county. This would have been for FY 2425. Each member of the salary committee knew this, and most members respected the request to wait to ask for any increases for their departments. Now, let me just say this. I am not anti-law enforcement. I am pro-law enforcement and appreciate the dangers that they may face on the job. I appreciate that their meals are oftentimes interrupted and that they are not always welcome in places where they are needed. This is not about law enforcement. This is about setting a standard for all to follow. This is about respecting every department, every department head, every elected official, and every county employee. You, the court, also knew there was a process in place. You even denied another department administrator when a similar request was made previously so that the process could continue fairly across all departments. Not only did you completely disregard the committee and the work we all put into it, you completely and downright disrespected every other employee that works for the county. Period.
Thank you, Ms. Sweets. Who's next? I just worked.
Good morning. Just to follow up a little on Carol's, I just don't think it's fair that the rest of the departments followed the recommendations of the salary committee and then Lauren raises our sneaky snake at the last minute to one department. And the only position I heard to get the $10,000 raise during the budget hearing adoption was the deputies. But from what I understand, and please correct me if I'm wrong, it was also given to the patrol sergeants, investigators, and sergeant investigators. Commissioners need to be fair across the board to all employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. That's Chris Eckler.
Good morning. I remember when agenda items were discussed openly at these meetings. These days, it's obvious those discussions are held before these meetings. Because when one commissioner can make a long statement about how they feel about a specific item, and then two others respond simply with, "I would agree with everything he said," something's wrong. Aren't you representing four precincts? Let your opinion be heard, one by one. Don't discuss among yourselves and then summarize it for the public. And why so many executive sessions? Secondly, please make next year's full budget available, or at least the capital outlay available, to all departments in addition to our individual budgets. That 767,000 Odyssey conversion included in this year's budget should have been made known to the departments it concerned. There should be no surprises to any department. It involved four departments that were 400% against it. Had we not been made aware and none of you commented on it, well, let's just be glad that didn't happen. Sneaky move. Question: Why are there any raises this year? No one expected them. This is supposed to be year two of that three-year plan. The 3% raises you're adding this year are just gonna make the step program harder to compensate next year. The raises are great for the newcomers, but I thought the objective is to keep employees. And once again, one department pushes themselves up to change a previously approved budget, a department with a member on the salary committee. The rules just don't apply to all departments, do they? And as for the sheriff's office last-minute raises, police officers are like teachers. They don't choose their possession. They don't choose their profession for the money. It's a love, a calling, a love for the job. You treat them right, you let them make a difference, and they're gonna stay where they're originally stationed. You can attract a bee with honey, like you can attract an employee to money. But the secret is, how do you keep them there? At the August 8 budget meeting, two members of this court said, "We can't keep throwing money at these people. What is it gonna take?" I think we all know the answer isn't money. If Karnes County is a stepping stone, then why do so many deputies keep transferring to the Karn City PD and the Kennedy PD? A lot of them are staying in Karnes County. And if Senate Bill 22 is relating to the establishment of grant programs to provide financial assistance to qualified sheriff's offices, constables' offices, and prosecutors' offices in rural counties, why don't we wait and let it offer some relief to the county then? Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
And one more, we have Mr. Shakme.
All I can say is ditto to what they said. They said it a whole lot better than I could. All I'm asking is I'm hoping that the community will start coming up here a little bit more and get a little more involved, especially the younger people. Come up here and see where your county funds are going. Make your rounds to the departments. Go in there, visit with them. If you have time, I know a lot of people work, some people don't. But go in there and visit with them and see where your money's going. You know, visit with them, go out on the roads, see those guys, take them a pizza or soda or something, some cold water, it's hot. Visit with the commissioners. I don't do it very much. I probably should, as far as the commissioners go. But I fully intend on starting to make my rounds a little more and visiting with everybody so I can understand where all this is going, understand how the roads are done, and how the offices are run, and how the employees feel. That's what's important. You know, this tax money didn't just appear. Taxpayers, your grandparents, your great-grandparents, your parents, your apparent, your grandkids, your kids. Y'all grounded people here, it'd be great to have younger people come up here and see what's going on. I just, you know, I'm looking forward to that. I'm looking forward to a little more change. Y'all gentlemen, have a good day. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, we'll move to item number six. Discuss approve/disapprove a budget amendment for the district clerk's office. The request for $1,500 to be moved from office expense 100-450-3100 to copy machine expense 100-450-3310. Denise?
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioner. My original quote that was presented to Judge preparing for FY 2223 has expired. I wanna add a fact card along with my new copier, so I need to move monies. Any questions?
Make the motion for item number six to approve it as presented.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, please. Anybody opposed? No. Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
Item number seven, discuss approve/disapprove award the contract for the construction of modifications to an existing structure at 119 North Brown Street, Karn City, Texas. Mr. Montalvo, Mr. Dupe Nick, and Commissioner Rosales. This is in reference to our auditor's office that earned.
All right, we received four bids. Mr. Rosales and Renee were there to open the bids. The first bid was from All-Pro for $719,000. The second bid was from Crystal Anchors for $396,500. The second, the third bill was from Geo Phil for $470,172. And the final bid was from CNC Construction for $288,250. I'm letting Mr. Rosales take over because I believe y'all graded the bids with.
Yes, we met. We opened up the bids, we looked at everything. Everything went. They all bid off of the same, it was apples for apples. We went back and we met, we called in. I think that day when we were meeting with them, one construction company was there, right?
Geo was there.
Geo was there, okay. They all had a, they all, they had, they all had a pretty good reputation on them and everything, but the one CNC Construction was $288,250 for the same thing. They bid off of the same apples to apples, oranges to oranges. So our recommendation would be with CNC Construction. We met with him quite a few times, and it looks like he's up to par on everything. He met everything that we needed him to take care of. And the other ones are great contractors too. They were just a little bit, one was $100,000 higher, one was $200,000, $300,000. So we're choosing CNC Construction to get the best bang for our buck for the county. And they did bid off of the same package.
And he's a local contractor.
I'm sorry, he's also a local contractor here. And he's done a lot of work around here and.
CNC Construction.
We, I went ahead and I made some calls on, I asked him if it was okay. He said, "Yeah, it's not a problem." I called to some other homes that he's built, other construction projects that he's had. I didn't get any complaints from him. Everybody talked about him really well, said he does a good job, he's pretty punctual on everything. So I feel, I feel that we're choosing the right one.
What was the bid?
$288,250.
Renee, what happens if he goes over 180 days? What happens if he goes, say, three, two, takes him maybe, you know, another 200 days?
I'll address that, Commissioner Dupe Nick. We, when Commissioner Rosales and myself and Renee sat down with CNC Caesar, when we sat down with him, we asked that very question. And he, Caesar believes that as long as he can get material, windows and, and maybe it was just windows that are still such a far out to, to get in stock anywhere. He said even, you know, Home Depot, I think that we, I think that we bid pellet windows in this one for whatever reason. But he said he could be done, he wants to get done in two months. I mean, the quicker he gets done, the quicker he gets paid. So it will not be any, anything that, that any other contractor would not be facing.
Thank you, Judge.
Yes, sir.
James?
We did discuss all the materials, and he's gonna be using as much as he can with the materials from local stores here and everything. So that's another reason. He was the, he was the lowest bidder, but also it was a plus that he was a local contractor.
We had a list of questions that we asked him, and one of the questions we asked him too was, is he subbing out most of his job, or is he doing most of it? He's doing most of the job.
Only thing that he'll sub out was HVAC and electrical, correct?
Yep, the heat rack and electrical, yes, sir. Everything else, his guys are gonna take care of it.
So with that said, that means that it should wrap it up faster. Just the windows might be an issue. And Tom, didn't you put a $20,000 contingency on there?
I believe. Yes, sir.
If something happens that, per se, the windows may cost a bit more, we have that $20,000 contingency in there to cover any expenses for what-ifs or something happens that we don't know about, undescribed or seen things.
And he's also very, guys, he's also very comfortable with us. We asked him if, for one reason or another, if we seen something that might, we believe might not be quite right or something during the project.
Yeah, right.
I told him if we could go ahead and we could just hold on to it and then give him a call. He said, "Yes." He didn't have a problem with anything like that. He said we could be there anytime we needed to be there. I told him that we would all be checking on him. He was very happy with that. And he's very comfortable with us asking him questions about the project as it goes along.
We have two buildings here that didn't, wasn't done by code, and that's something that we don't want to see done again. So Ms. Rosales, Commissioner Rosales and myself will be inspecting each phase.
Yep, I would, I would be checking on it daily.
Whenever you are.
We approve to award the contract for the construction of modifications to an existing structure on 119 North Brown Street, Karn City, Texas.
Second it.
What's the amount?
The amount can.
$288,250.
To?
To CNC Construction?
Yeah. CNC Construction.
I'll second.
I believe Commissioner Geisler seconded that. Okay, I have a motion and a second now. Everybody that is in favor of that, signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed? No. Motion carries. Okay, item number eight, discuss approve/disapprove recommendation for all four constables to have office space at county building at 1178 FM 1353. Commissioner Lissy and Commissioner Geisler.
Well, the constables needed an office with a computer so they can download their stuff and they can have a, what do you call it? Evidence locker. And there is room at this building on 1178 FM 1353. So recommend that they have that office space.
I believe that the constables and Commissioner Lissy had gone over to inspect that, and I think they had approved, given their approval of the security of the facility, so.
Please, yeah, commissioners, please speak in your microphones.
Sorry, ma'am. I said the constables and Commissioner Lissy, I do believe, had gone over to the facility and had inspected the facility, and they had given their syllable approval on, they felt that that would work and be functional for them.
I visited with the constables, and all the constables are in favor of doing this. The building that, that they're talking about at 1178 FM 1353 is the new county road and bridge facility. And so the constables feel like that this is a good temporary spot until we get some things built in Rungy and Falls City and other precincts, other two precincts, for our constables to start parking their vehicles. And so I believe that this is a temporary fix. I don't know how much room is at that building, but if the constables are good for that, then their decision.
I move we approve the recommendations for all the four constables have office space at at county building at 1178 FM 1353.
I'll second it.
Hey, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed? No.
Hey, I did.
You opposed it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, item number nine, discuss approve/disapprove a budget amendment to move $5,500, $5,500 from 795-750-4995, which is your water sewer permit assistance, to 200-680-3310.
to 200-680-3353, software licensing. Budget amendment is for the renewal of permit code enforcement software special projects for the 2023, 2024 licensing year. Jim Adams, Wayne Geisler.
Morning, Court.
Good morning.
Morning.
The line item we're moving this from is we had put ARPA funds in there for the, the budget here and what we're asking, we still have 117 in there. We'd like to move that 5,500 to renew the permitting software. So it's got to move from assistance to software because of line item developed by auditors. And that was the request. This is just for renewal for next year.
Discussion from the court?
Is that going to tie into the iWork queue?
Yes, it's iWork, my iWork side.
And what will the code enforcement software do?
This is the code enforcement and the permit are together. Those platforms are online so that if there's violations out in the field, it's on the code enforcement side where we log those. And there are quite a few in there right now that we've put in. So I encourage that some of the commissioners, maybe if you have some time, come by and we'll take a look at that permitting side and the code enforcement side. And then, of course, it's, you can see them all in there, which is the other sides, road and bridges, work management.
I'll make the motion to approve item number nine as presented.
I'll second it.
Hey, we have a motion in a couple of seconds. I don't know if we've got the, got the second in, but all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed? Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Court.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number 10, discuss, approve, disapprove, recommendation to extend the contract listed below through fiscal year 2023, 2024. Wayne Geisler?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and run through the contracts that didn't, didn't make the agenda, but it was basically our normal, I, what we call our IDIQ, our indefinite duration, indefinite quantity contracts. They're what we use regularly to assist us in both construction and maintenance. The first one, all, all the contracts that we're talking about extending had an extension clause in them. We bid them in FY 22, 23, the current fiscal year, and we're wanting to extend them through this year, which is a great deal given all the price increases that we've had that we're seeing in the construction area. The ones where, the, here's the list. It's a water hauling contract extension with Tierra Lease Services. There's our bulk road material contracts. We're going to extend with Vulcan Materials. We got a drainage materials procurement contract with Mayfield Pipe and Lumber. We got a bulk paving oil procurement contract with Ergon Asphalt and Emulsions. We got bulk paving materials procurement contracts with both Colorado Materials and Vulcan Materials. We've got bulk road materials procurement with, with Colorado Materials. We've got roadway and drainage construction service support contracts for BRN Construction, Trucking and Construction. We've got drainage construction, service support contract with SD Reyes. We've got turnkey contract support, turnkey service support contract extensions with both CK Newberry and ABN. These are all the companies that are basically building all of our roads. And they, like we said, we got, we got some good prices. We were able to convince the, the vendors to, to continue with their, their pricing. And Carol, I'm not sure if you got a copy of this, but basically assuming the approval, the, the, the pricing that we've got right now, any change in contracts or anything that we've discussed over this past year are in there. So you, we'll need to get you a copy of this for the, the item. But your package should have all the prices in there for the, that are, that we're extending. Like I said, we, we, we feel like this is a really good deal for the county. We didn't, we, we didn't adjust any of the pricing, so we're in really good shape.
How much of this is CTIF?
The project, these projects are typically, these, these line items are typically not going to be used on CTIF, except on very, very rare occasions because the state, our particular district didn't allow us to utilize these contracts. We have to bid them out, so that's how we handle them, Commissioner.
Have the commissioners looked over all of these contracts? Has Legal looked over these contracts?
Legal approved them last year, so.
And I have a question for Legal since we have Legal here. If they're not listed on here, can we approve those? I, 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 I know that when the request came in from Road and Bridge, whether there was miscommunication in my office and his office, apparently there was, but they're not actually listed on here. I, I want to make sure that, and maybe that, you know, the commissioners that haven't had a chance to look at these, that they can look at these contracts as well. Ms. Tapia?
As far as being transparent to make sure that they're listed, because I know on our website, I don't believe any of the things are attached to the agenda. So, and I know that in general, public can go and look at everything for the agenda, but not knowing what those contracts are, I would prefer that they have been listed. And I think that would be more transparent.
I agree.
You can do that.
If we can do that.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for the discussion. And we will move to item number 11.
Thank you. We'll table that until next.
Correct. Discuss, approve, disapprove, sending binder payment by September 15th, 2023 in the amount of $137,560.82 to United Healthcare for October premiums. This is required by United Healthcare in order to make coverage effective October 1st, 2023. Bye, Dave.
Good morning, Gian. I'm just going to read a little statement from United Healthcare. Payment is required to bind the coverage. Payment is due on the 15th of the month prior to the effective date, and it is an estimate of the first month's medical premium. Any variances in the amount will be addressed on the following invoice. This amount that's in there is from our first payroll, where we take all the premiums out for the county employees' insurance and their life insurance and the second payroll, which is this week. And thank you, Jimmy, for getting the internet back up today so we got people paid. That is the, the amounts. We're pretty close on penny with it. It's just something that we have to do and Tom and I will get together on getting the wire sent to them before Friday.
Great, thank you.
Everybody's covered?
Yes.
Everybody that signed up?
Yeah, everybody that signed up. And we, we've got everybody. Open enrollment was great this year.
I don't know that we have any employees anymore. I remember Constable Fenner, he had state benefits that he used, that he was one of the only ones that, that I can remember that didn't sign up for county.
I did.
And you too? Yeah.
Yeah, everybody is, has their life insurance, whether you accept the medical or not, but everybody has life insurance.
Thank you. Bye. Action item, if there's no more discussion, we need a motion.
I make the motion to approve item number 11 as presented. I'll second.
Hey, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, bye. Item number 12, we have our consent agenda, our reports for this commissioner court. We have Constable Precinct 3. We have our IT department. We have Justice of the Peace Precinct 2, courthouse maintenance, our Texas DVM, our driver's license office, elections administration, JP 1, JP 4, and our sheriff's office. They're all the reports for this agenda.
Judge, make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion, commissioners? All right, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed? No, motion carries. Item number 13, need to pull any of these reports to further discussion? If not, we'll move to item number 14 and have our updates from our commissioners, starting Precinct 1.
I spent a little time last week with Representative Gian. We went down to Hepburnville, met with him down there at, at an event he had for, he was head of the Homeland Security Committee for the, for the state. We went down there, Sheriff Fennway and I went down there and met with him. Been working on a little bit of that broadband and talking with different people. I've been contacting the schools. See, the TDM has got some supplies in a big warehouse they built in San Antonio. And I requested some supplies just for the schools and whoever else needed some, wasn't going to, wasn't going to cost us anything, just I'll have to go up there to get it. They're going through it right now, make sure nothing's expired. And then yesterday, Judge Hidgley was over at the annexes and I walked up there too and they were drilling holes. They drilled two holes yesterday, 40 feet down, and they were installing the peziometers. And I think they got two more holes to do today. That's all I have, Judge.
Those holes that Commissioner Dupe Nick is talking about, those are, they're, the, the boards that they're doing for the annex foundation repair, they did get, I believe they finished two of them yesterday and they've got two more to, two more to do today. Is that correct, Renee?
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Precinct 2.
Well, we got the drainage finished on County Road 213. It's about ready to be paved. And Road 214, City of Corn City had a water leak right underneath the road and they had to dig the road up and patch their water line and they fixed our, our road back real well. Let's see, I picked up the interlocal agreement from our Justice of Peace Precinct 2 and the City of Fall City from our county attorney and got it all signed and got it back to the City of Fall City. And 181 has been chipped and seal coated from Corn City to Fall City. It's, looks a whole lot better than it did. And they lowered the speed limit, I believe it was from, what, 75 to 65? Is that right?
On 181, it was 75?
I always thought it was 65.
70 to 65, okay. And we're still working on getting the speed limit lowered in, in Coys City. And that's about it.
Okay, Commissioner Precinct 3?
Good morning. I went out to County Road 298. We're doing a project there with Road and Bridge. Road and Bridge is taking care of that road really nice. I met with the constituents there, they had a couple of concerns. We ironed it all out, met with Tech Stop, everything's going good over there. Project looks great. Constituents, as of the ones I spoke with, are happy, the ones that had concerns and I met with them. Also, I met with Chief Solis, a constable, and he had some questions and concerns about the vehicles and other items where we're doing the transactions between the, the vehicles and the constables. So I met with him, went and met with the sheriff, went back and met with him, kind of back and forth. So everything's going good with the vehicles as of now. And I'm trying to keep up with the constables. I think Chief Solis is answering for all four constables the way he told me. So that's the one I'm dealing with right now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Precinct 4?
Yes, I've been visiting with the Road and Bridges there on County Road 124, but it's about to be wrapped up and, and finished there. County Road 125 is also the process of, of getting to that, that point. I did answer a couple of phone calls from some constituents concerning about moving a dozer across some of the local bridges. I did pass that on to Road and Bridge Engineering, and they did address, address their questions. Also visited with Commissioner Lissy and I out at the, the Road and Bridges facility and about the constables' room there to get, make sure they have a secure place to put their stuff. And then I did visit one day with Constable Rios on, on a couple of items. And that's all, Judge.
Thank you.
Good morning, how's everybody this morning?
Good, how are you?
Doing great. And for the county M and O for the month of August, we collected $68,058.52. The current year-to-date was $17,162,966.4, with 98.91% collected. If y'all will remember, last month, we had that mineral load and our collections were down. We do honor postmarks at our office. When we got back after the Fourth of, I'm sorry, the Labor Day holiday, we had some big checks. And as of this morning, we're now up to 99.44% collected. For the delinquents, the month-to-date was $10,575.65. The delinquent year-to-date was $142,106.95%, I'm sorry, 95 cents with 36.83% collected. Sorry about that. For the county INS, the delinquent month-to-date was $91.32. The delinquent year-to-date was $2,175.25, with 41.11% collected. For the road and bridge, the month-to-date for current, it was $13,894.73. The current year-to-date was $3,507,241.21, with 98.91% collected. On the delinquent month-to-date, it was $2,158.72. And on the delinquent year-to-date, it was $28,217.83, with 38.19% collected. What I wanted to say is on the top 50 that I give y'all, there was one that was outstanding at the end of August, but they paid it on September the 5th. And also at the end of August last year, the collections were 99.01%.
We were at 99.44.
And today, it's, as of this morning, it was 99.44% collected.
Tom?
All right, Court, I should have my reports from last week. So we continue to trend well. We have 13 more working days in this fiscal year. So we're wrapping up this fiscal year and it looks like we're going to be probably about 20, 20, 25% under on our expenses for the general fund. I mean, all our departments, as I said, are very good stewards of their funds. Looking at the county sales tax group, probably going to. Looking at the county sales tax, we're probably going to be about three million, four-fifty surplus in what we budgeted. Our EMS receipt will probably be a hundred and ninety thousand on interest, about one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand. As far as expenses that are outside of court, that's on page eleven-eleven of your report. The total amount is nine million, five hundred fifty-eight thousand, oh-ninety-seven point eighty-seven, and which majority of that is GEO. Because you know, we're passed through for GEO, so we earn interest on that money. So that was eight million, six hundred seventy-three thousand, one seventy-three, ninety-five. As far as our investments, at the end of last month, we had eighty-three million, seven hundred fifteen thousand, six hundred fifty-seven, eighteen in our investments. So we continue to trend around four hundred thousand dollars in interest. We're coming up on year-end, as I just mentioned. I sent out an end-of-the-year memo on the thirtieth of August, just to remind everyone on dates and so forth. So any items to be expensed to this year's budget has to be received in the office or services performed by the twenty-ninth, which is two weeks from Friday, in order to be expensed into the twenty-three budget. We're cutting off POs this Friday, so if there's any things you need to buy, that's fine, but get with me, if it's after Friday, if there's things that are outside the norm, and we can process it through regular payables. The other thing I wanted to mention, we did switch to per diem system back in November. Court approved the policy. I wanted everyone to know, this has not cost the county any money. Our overall budget line items for those lines were like seventy-four thousand dollars countywide. Countywide expenses have been like fifty-three thousand dollars. So no one's abusing our per diem policy. It's working for what it's meant to work for, and I just want everyone to know that. And that's it. We're doing good. Like I said, countywide, we continue to do well, and I praise all the department heads for doing that, because we can't do it by ourselves.
Thank you, Tom. Ms. Swartz?
I promise this is the last time you see me today. Balance as of July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, eighty-six million, ninety-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and eighty-five cents. Receipts for the month of August, twenty-twenty-three, thirty-five million, two hundred ninety-five thousand, nine hundred thirty-five dollars and seventy cents. Disbursements for the same time period, thirty-five million, six hundred fifty-six thousand, forty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents, for an ending balance as of August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, eighty-five million, seven hundred thirty-four thousand, seven hundred four dollars and thirty-two cents.
Item number sixteen, discuss, take action regarding the treasury report.
I move we approve the treasury report as presented.
I'll second. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed?
Thank you.
Item number seventeen, discussion slash acknowledgement of personnel changes. This is all departments. Bonnie's got a list for y'all in y'all's packets. Staff birthdays, Wesley Geisler, Delilah Gonzalez, Glenn Villanueva, Ezra Serna, Vida Swartz, Benito Perez, Leoncio De La Garza, Jimmy Lopez, John Rodriguez, Moses Gonzalez, Olivia Montesvillas, Sunny Bean, Richard Banduk, Duane Villanueva, Tommy Torres, Jesse Sandoval, Tammy Broadway, Martino Mendoza, Lupi Zamora, Antonio Mendoza, Donald Hans, Kelsey Wright, and Severo Salas. Happy birthday. Got some milestones here. Sylvia Peña with the County Library in Kennedy, nineteen ninety-five was hired. Mary Tam's been here since ninety-six. Megan Dennison, your ag extension service, twenty-twelve, twenty-sixteen, Denise Jimenez, moved a couple of times. Melissa Alvarez in the District Clerk's Office, twenty-seventeen. Harold Allen, Road and Bridge. Tommy Torres, twenty-seventeen and twenty-nineteen. Eloy Rodriguez in the Sheriff's Department, he's been here since twenty-nineteen. Liche Cavazos in the District Judge Court, twenty-nineteen. Amanda Morales in juvenile probation, twenty-nineteen. Richard Banduk in twenty-twenty. Ben Mchigamba, twenty-twenty-one. Priscilla Bryan, twenty-twenty-one. Christopher Driver, twenty-twenty-one. Darren Driscoll, Joy Morales, Esther Cortez, and David Chapman, all in twenty-twenty-two. Thank y'all for your service. We do have some new hires, starting September one and August twenty-first in the Sheriff's Department. Two new hires there. No resignations, no terminations, no retirements. Item number eighteen, payment of bills.
Okay, Court. I sent the bill list out on Friday. The total bills on the list were one million, eighty-nine thousand, five hundred fifty-two, ninety-five. There was actually two changes from yesterday that came that I'm going to add to that or propose to add to that. It was for the Kennedy Library from work that they had done. They have an old donation fund that they have money into in order to pay this. And what the issue was here, they had purchase orders issued on these two items. Well, one of them, they forgot to cancel another purchase order, so when we got the bill, they didn't have enough money to pay the bill. Another one, they had the wrong vendor. We set up a new vendor, but they forgot to add the new purchase order, the new vendor. So this is all okay. I asked Sylvia to, Sylvia Peña to talk to the judge after I reviewed everything. So I want to add this to the total bills for today, which amount to one million, one-oh-five, eight ninety-eight, fifteen. And like I said, the majority of the bills are Road and Bridge, like nine-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand.
Sylvia felt terrible about the, her little PO mishap, and she called me yesterday and, you know, I appreciated as an old contractor myself, getting paid for a job in a timely manner, and it wasn't anybody's fault. It was just a mistake in a PO. And so, Tom, thank you for getting that taken care of yesterday and get the gentleman paid.
So as you know, we adopted the purchase order system, so the process does work. And I do encourage everyone, we send this out every week, please check your boxes every in case we reject the invoice, come by the office, check your boxes. If it's inconvenient to come to Carne City, call us. We can tell you if there's something in there that, because we don't want to hold up an invoice to get a vendor not paid.
Make the motion to pay the bills with the changes presented by the auditor.
Motion and second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Any opposed? No? Okay. Item number nineteen, acknowledge that Commissioners Court will meet on September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three, at nine o'clock in the morning, right here in your Carne County Historic Courtroom at one-oh-one North Panamaria Avenue, Suite Two Hundred, Carne City, Texas. Need a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second.